I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Your first item is to recognize the girls tennis state championship team. I will turn the microphone over to Coach Rohr if it should be on.
Hello.
There you go.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for having us here tonight and taking a second to recognize all the amazing athletes that are here today. I also wanted to give a quick thank you to the school, our athletic director, and administration, and most importantly, our community who helped support us throughout our whole season, especially with that really special parade on her way home from states this year. These girls are truly remarkable on and off the court, and they've really taught me a lot this season, so a big thank you to you guys as well. For those of you who don't know, our girls this year went undefeated for the second season in a row, going 43-0. They earned the title of Shoreline Conference Champions, and for the second year in a row, became Class S Times Champions as well. Let's read the names of the girls really quickly. Abby Sigaranza. Sam Tan. Charlie Bass. Elena Morowski. Alexis Fenton. Livy Bass. Aggie Hunt. Beatrice Hunt. Fiona Hunter. Izzy Reynolds. And Olivia Shadler.
Before you sit down, I don't know if this is a surprise or not, but it's hard to go 43-0 and not be recognized, so I want the whole team to know that Coach Rohr was recognized as the Shoreline Coach of the Year this year.
Actually, it would be great if they could move up. That would be a lot better. That would watch. All right, girls. Oh, you're all standing right there. Tim is here.
Nice.
I like this picture.
Oh, that's beautiful. Awesome. Thank you, girls.
Girl, come on out, please.
Can our girls crew team come up here, please? We also have a second state championship team that we want to recognize tonight, and Coach Fuchs is not able to be here tonight, but Victoria, I believe, is going to speak for the group.
Hello, thank you for having us tonight. We're here celebrating our seventh consecutive state championship win for our girls fours. And we also got to bring home our cup this year, again, bring it back home, it's rightful resting place. We also got our plate this year, which was most points scored overall for both boys and girls fours, so we also had a great win for our boys team, and it was just an honor rowing with everyone on the crew team. We had a really strong program this year, as we always do, and we really prevailed through COVID and through tough times, and were able to continue to train, and we had great results. And we're very thankful for our coach, Paul, for holding our hands and preparing us through all that. He also wanted me to say, he called it his favorite meme, I don't know if he knows what a meme is. It's not about, it's like, winning is nice, but it's not all about rowing, so I don't really know what that means.
We have one more special award tonight. We've had a few people who graduated from our school who've gone on to the Olympics, but we've never had an Olympian in our midst, so tonight we're going to recognize someone very special, and I'm turning that over to Coach Rohr to talk about our newest Olympian.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to introduce you to Andrea this evening. I first met Andrea when she joined Unified Sports this fall, and if you've ever met her before, you will completely agree with me that describing her as charismatic, compassionate, and outgoing are simply understatements to her truly exuberant personality. Andrea has been a member of the CT Special Olympics team for three years and is also a member of the LOLHS gymnastics team. This year, the CT Special Olympics sent a total of 33 delegates, three of which were competing in gymnastics, to the Special Olympics USA in Orlando, Florida. Andrea began training for her debut in January and competed as a Level 3 gymnast. Now, for anything like me, you have no idea what Level 3 means. That's okay, I did some research, and I'm happy to share with you that a Level 3 gymnast is someone who doesn't utilize as much support from their coach during competitions, and this could be something like guidance on a balance beam. Overall, there are just four levels. If you had the opportunity to chat with her in the halls before heading to Florida, she would confidently proclaim that she was coming home with a gold medal. And not only did she come home with one gold, but three gold medals. Not only did she only get three gold, but she also got a bronze and a fifth-place ribbon. She earned... She earned gold medals in Level 3 uneven bars, Level 3 all-around, and Level 3 for exercise. Her bronze was in Level 3 balance beam, and her fifth place was in Level 3 vaulting. So please, help me give Andrea a huge round of applause and a proud congratulations for her successes.
Thank you. Next is a public comment. Please remember to state your name, where you're from, and to limit your comments to three minutes. If you'd like to make any comment, for your end.
My name is Olaf Brechmano Ngolai. I live in 3 Gene Drive, Eastland Town. I'd like to thank you all for your work. I'm a friend of the Second Amendment, and I believe in the right to self-defense and that we must protect the innocent from harm. However, I think that arming our fine security staff would be a grave mistake, no matter the training. Our district's response to the threat of a school shooting should not be based on our feelings, or on the protective feelings we should all share towards our students, or anecdotes, or our intuition. It must be based on relevant science and on the psychology of potential perpetrators. The most comprehensive study I was able to find, which was also cited in the online survey, showed a dramatic increase in fatalities for school shootings where there was an armed guard. The deaths almost tripled with an armed guard. Some suggest that armed guards will act as a deterrent. That might be true for a sensible person with a healthy will to live, but that is not who commits school shootings. Most often, school shooters are suicidal students. The threat of death or bodily harm does not deter a suicidal attacker, it does the opposite. What do the armed guards accomplish then? They may lower response time, but if it comes to response time, really, it's already too late. Prevention, not reaction, must be our watchword. There is very well documented ample evidence that the presence of weapons increases aggression, the weapons effect, it's called. No matter how staff conceal their guns, every single student on campus above the age of six will doubtless know about them by the end of the first week. Maybe many, even well-adjusted boys, will begin gaming out cat-and-mouse schemes to outsmart and supplant such authority figures. We don't want to go down this road. No matter our good intentions, and that this policy might be enacted for their protection, our students will understand that these guns and the bullets in them could be for one of them. What does this do to how school feels to them? How do the disaffected respond? Our security staff know very well that the first bullet in any premeditated school shooting will be in the back of their head. What does this do to their relations with students? Arming them not only puts an itchy target on their backs and introduces guns into school, it completely undermines the trust and camaraderie a truly healthy school environment depends on. How much arming guards traumatizes and incites kids, undermines a supportive school environment, and increases the chances of a shooting and its potential body count should be at the core of deciding whether to do so. Arming guards must be done with the informed and thoroughly thought-through, not knee-jerk approval of the school community. I don't believe that that's what's happening here yet, despite what I'm certain are the best of intentions. In a climate of great urgency, the science speaks against arming guards. Developmental psychology and the psychology of violence also speaks against it, and there has not been sufficient community consideration of the consequences. I get wanting to do something and wanting security, but arming security staff will hurt rather than help. I therefore ask you, please, do not do this.
Three minutes. I encourage you, if you want to, to submit that whole letter, it will go into the minutes, and we will all read it. I don't know how much more you have to read.
Very little. I was just going to say, I'd also suggest, for similar reasons, that you reconsider the practice of involving students in active shooter drills, which I suspect only ups the chances of a shooting, but that's a discussion for another day. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And again, if you must submit that, we'll put it in the minutes. Anybody else?
I have a public comment.
I'm the daughter of a teacher, so I have handouts. This is the JAMA article that Olaf just talked about. Sorry, I'm Kim Thompson. I live at Two Little Field Lane in Old Line. I have a daughter at Lime School. And the JAMA article references the Strobe Checklist. This is the paper that outlines what the Strobe Checklist is. Mostly, I want to make sure that, as the board is considering this, that they have deeply explored all of the questions that come up when you're looking at something this consequential. So I've just given you the JAMA article that was referenced in that survey that was online. And I just have a lot of things that I think I would like you to think about. How does arming our security guards fit into the larger security plan? Was this identified as a gap in our security plan? When was that gap identified, and how was it identified? What is the purpose of arming the guards at the schools? Is it to prevent a shooting on school property? Is it to minimize casualties? If it is to minimize casualties, in what way would this work to minimize casualties? Do you have data to suggest that arming guards at schools decreases casualties in shooting events? If so, please share this data, because it would be integral to making this decision. Why does a plan like this need to be put in place for the start of the 2022-2023 school year? It's a tight timeline for buying weapons, ammunition, and body armor, or to create policies regarding storage and maintenance and job descriptions, and to look into insurance issues and training all of the staff. How do you train someone with a handgun to take on someone with a potentially higher capacity and semi-automatic-style weapon? In many school shootings, the shooters are also wearing protective body armor. What style, type, and what protective level of body armor will the guards be wearing? Are there established programs for this type of training? What is the replacement policy for the district-owned weapons? What is the replacement policy for the district-owned body armor that the guards will be wearing, if any? Will the guards be allowed to wear body armor that they themselves own? What kind of emotional impact would having guards in tactical gear on campus cause for children? What is the training program for the security guards? Does the training program include mandatory shooting range time? Who will pay for any mandatory shooting range time? Both at the time, both the time of the employee at the range and the cost of the range? Who will oversee this entire program and ensure compliance with all training and maintenance? And what are their qualifications? If a child brings what looks like a real gun into a school and the weapon is seen by an armed guard, what is the guard expected to do? Shoot the child before the child has a chance to potentially shoot anyone, or approach the child first and find out if the weapon is real, thereby potentially allowing shots to be taken in those moments? Is there a standard protocol set by a school governing authority? Thank you.
Thank you. Again, if we have some of you that just have been writing, we'll finish the minutes. Anybody else have a public comment?
My name is Diane Linderman. I live at Eight Lantern Lane in Old Line. I would like to draw some analogies between what we're doing here today, possibly, and what was done in the summer of 2020, when we had a real threat, an actual threat with COVID. During that summer, there was a group of community members, teachers, staff, parents, administrators, that worked diligently for two solid months to come up with a plan that would allow us to open our schools safely for all students to attend. And we then communicated that plan to our parents and to our community, and they felt comfortable with that, and the students came to school. I would like to see the same sort of consideration for this issue as well. I know there is a security plan. I think it's a good time that we take a look at that. Let's look at it again, let's see what we're doing, let's see what we can do more of to prevent unwanted people from entering our schools, before we take the step of arming our security guards and bringing guns into our schools. I would like to support the other speakers. I think it's important that we look at data, and that's what I think we should be doing for the next couple of months, and considering this a lot more thoroughly than I think we have done so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Microphone. Would anyone else like to make a public comment?
Hi, my name is Michelle Han. I live at Two Pires Court. I have a student at the Mount Craig School and two high scores as well, but I'm also an elementary school principal as well. So I spend a lot of time worrying about school safety, and my only request would be to spend more time with this decision. I just think making something such a big change in how we address this in our schools needs more time to make sure we're making the very best choice and that the community supports that choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you roll the mic, please? Sorry.
Thank you. Scott Brown, 6 Gene Drive, Old Line. I retired as the principal of this high school after 20 years back in 2000, and, as I mentioned before, I'm proud of the fact that I never reappeared until now. I would stress, slow down, slow down on this one, please. And I'm basing my years as a high school principal on the fact that I was the principal when we had the SRO program. And I don't see any evidence yet that this board hasn't sat down with their guidance and counseling staff in this district, the psychologists, you know, I assume you're ready for ministers, but I think we need to learn a lot more about what the potential unanticipated consequences can be, and I think you may want to learn a lot more about the humanistic school climate that you've got in this district. The other thing I mentioned is, I spent another 18 years after that at the high school working as school administrators, school leaders in the state, and you, right now, have got, in my opinion, the best school district leadership and building administrative leadership you could possibly have. So, slow down with this.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make a public comment? Yeah, that was the right button.
This was the right button.
Yeah, was it red?
It's not red. Okay.
I don't need the mic. This one. I can speak loud enough. Give him the mic. Rohr, give him your mic.
Oh. Just move it over to her, too.
I'll give you my soda.
Good evening. My name is Trevor Kegley, Old Line graduate, class of 2013, U.S. Army combat veteran. I served six years in the 1102nd Infantry Regiment, including a deployment to Africa. Their unit defended a small base in Kenya. Our mission was to befriend the local villagers. These were small mud hut villages in the jungle, no electricity, very poor. There were many more kids than there were adults, literally hundreds of kids, all eager to hold our hands and walk with us. Their education may not be the same as mine in Old Line, but they value it just the same. The enemy, Al-Shabaab, were militant insurgents who had terrorized the villagers. When I was there, they burned out our school. The villagers are not allowed to own weapons, but Al-Shabaab would go to Somalia and get weapons from al-Qaeda, ISIS. Here in Old Line, we don't live in a war-torn, third-world country. We reasonably assume that when our kids get picked up by the bus to go to school, they won't get kidnapped, held hostage, or pressed into serving terrorism. The kids in mine will line are just as precious as those kids in single-room mud hut schoolhouses in Kenya. Their value is immeasurable, they are truly precious. What would those villagers do for their children that we wouldn't do for ours? How is it that our police stations are armed? Hospitals, airports, bus-train stations, banks, stores, gates, celebrities, mail trucks, parades? Is a bus ticket or a Christmas present or a paper dollar bill more precious than a child? I read a statement to the Board of Education, I won't, I know it was written from a political town meeting, I won't share who showed this to me. The committee warned of consequences. I didn't realize that the guaranteed safety of our children was a consequence rather than the desired result. They wrote that arming guards may seem like a good idea, as if arming hospitals, banks, and VIPs is somehow not a good idea. Finally, they mentioned the possible emotional impact of arming guards. The way I see it, I'd rather have a child see a gun on the hip of a guard twice a day, once going into school, once going out, than to have that child feeling no emotions at all, lying dead on the floor. Some here may say that they don't think my testimony as a soldier is appropriate, they don't want their kids in war. That's not my point. Our kids are not in war, and thank God. How blessed we are in America to withhold our children from such horror and be able to do it so very easily, I would even do it myself, for free. I ask the board to take the word of my old line graduate and a combat veteran that protected children that parents entrust to you. It is the simplest and most sensible thing you can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, if you'd like to submit that, we'll put that in the writing list. Would anyone else like to make a public comment?
Hi, I'm Dave Verbino. I live at Seven Little Tree Lane. I have two children in the school system, one that will be in middle school next year, one that is at Lime School. A couple things. I think all of us here today are here for the same reason, we want to protect our kids. And the only question is, are we making the right decision on how to do that? And how do we make the decision on how to do that? I mean, I appreciate and thank you for our service to the speaker before me, but it illustrates a very easy path we can go down. There is a difference between banks and hospitals and courts and schools. The types of people, and more zones, the types of people who we're protecting against in those areas, somebody who's specifically rationally trying to rob a bank, somebody who's specifically rationally trying to have a vendetta against a judge, versus a mentally ill person who has a death wish. That has been the pattern of these students that are shooting up schools. And the JAMA study that has been talked about before illustrates this. What did that JAMA study do? It looked at every single student shooting since 1980 and determined, was there an armed guard present or wasn't there? And in the school shootings, almost three times as many of the schools had an armed guard presence. And the theory worked in theory as well. Possibly what's happening here is we're incentivizing, because these people have a death wish, they want to go and blaze of glory. I don't mind if you want to come forward with evidence and data that shows me I'm wrong, and if you do, I'd be happy, I want my kids safe. What I don't want this board to do is to make a decision despite the data. And that's what it sounds like we're doing. So I just want to make sure that as this board takes this all into consideration, we are not doing this despite the data. And speaking of that, the last thing I want to say is, you know, I want to thank Mr. and Advisor for sending around this thought exchange survey, and though many of us don't feel that it was a very effective way to gauge community thoughts in this matter, it resoundingly showed that the community was against this, resoundingly. And to the extent that we think that this data should be looked at, then we should also take that into consideration, because thought exchange was designed specifically because not everybody is going to be able to come to a Board of Education meeting and say their piece. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a comment?
My name is Eric Olson. I live at Four Hastings Lane. Still have two children, which will be in high school next year, and I just wanted to implore the board to take your time. If we end up having to go this route of arming security, I'd want to make sure... If we end up having to go this route of arming security, I want to ensure it's a decision that is well thought out, not a decision that was first brought to this board, I believe, two weeks ago at a board meeting. And, you know, the public has now had two weeks to kind of digest what has been put out there. So, I just want you to make sure you take your time and look at all the research and what this could do to our, you know, to our children that's been said by many speakers. And it's a sad state that we have to have this conversation right now in this country. But I just want to make sure that whatever decision that is made, it's made with all of the data, and you take your time and not just a knee-jerk reaction to the situation that we're in. So, thank you. Thank you.
My name is Maggie Anderson. I'm at 2 Dutchess Drive. I have a fourth grader, a fifth grader, a seventh grader, and a ninth grader. And I just, one day I was talking to my daughter about, you know, are you ever afraid when you see a policeman at school? Because we have had policemen at school. We've had, I'm assuming they're armed when they've been out of school this year. And I was shocked when my daughter said, my fourth grader said to me, I like seeing a policeman there. I feel safer when I see a policeman there. And I'm sure those kids all know that the policeman has guns. I was shocked when she said to me, I'm afraid to go to school. She's never said that to me before. As far as overwhelming me saying that this town doesn't agree with it, we all love to post on Facebook, some of us more than others. And what I saw on Facebook was when there was an article about this, I would say it was 50/50. I would not say it was overwhelming against it. Maybe some of the comments were people who kept commenting, but I don't think this board, I'm sure this is not the first time this has come up. I would assume that this has been talked about prior to just the last two weeks. I'm not saying to rush it, but I'm sure there's things that you guys have talked about that we as a community don't realize. So, I would not be surprised if this has been talked about longer. So again, I think kids are used to seeing a police car at school. I think they realize the policeman has guns. And I was surprised when my daughter said, I like seeing security there. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gaven Lodge. I live at 59 Brockway Ferry Road in Lime. I have a fifth grader at Lime School and a fifth grader. And one, I want to say I'm so proud of this community that we are here not screaming at each other. It is a relief. I was really afraid that this would devolve into something that we see and read about in other states that I won't name. So, kudos to us and kudos to you to opening the floor for this kind of discussion that's rational and reasonable. I think it's so important that as being respectful members of a community, we come together and we do listen and we consider both sides. So, thank you. I certainly support all of the reference to data and implore all of you to take your time with this. The JAMA report really is, seems to be the topic of the night. I thought I was going to be the first one to bring it in. But I want to echo all of that. I realize that at, in Lime, we have a special situation, frankly, that we're 20 minutes away from any kind of recourse or emergency. And that is scary, scary, scary for a parent. And it's a real consideration to have to take into all of our minds, but I'm not convinced that putting more guns in more hands is the response, the right response. The data is simply not there to prove that this is the right response. I want to read quickly, because I don't really have that much to say, although I'm probably already rambling too much. But the end of the JAMA report actually says, "The well-documented weapons effect explains that the presence of a weapon increases aggression. Whenever firearms are present, there is room for error and even highly trained officers get split, second decisions wrong. Prior research suggests that many school shooters are actively suicidal and tending to die in the act, so an armed officer may be an incentive rather than a deterrent. The majority of shooters who target schools are students of the, are students of the school, calling into question the effectiveness of hardened security and active shooter drills. Instead, schools must invest in resources to prevent shootings before they occur." Obviously, that's really the conclusion, not all of the data points before that, but I hope you might look at that. And finally, I just beg for all of you as leaders to think of this systemically. If you're not equally coupling funding for mental health along with arming security guards, then it's a failure of leadership. Fighting guns with more guns is just grandstanding, it's not actually solving the problem of mental health for our children in our community. Leadership is about action, for sure, but it's not about knee-jerk reaction. Whatever you decide tonight, or hopefully way down the line, it's not about arming school security. It's not enough to wait around for a violent act to occur or act reactively then. I hope as leaders to be proactive and take preventative steps. Invest in the health resources for all of our kids, so if one of them is in trouble, we can catch them before they fall, reach them before they become unreachable. That's the kind of leadership this issue demands.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Anna Ryder, and I live at 264 Mile Creek Road. I have two children who are currently at Mile Creek and one who will be there any year. I really appreciate that all of you have seen what's going on in the country and have chosen to start talking about it. I think it's great. I do ask you to please slow down and take a little bit more time. I sent you all a very lengthy letter earlier today, asking lots of questions. I don't feel like I need to read those questions verbatim, too, but I think that those are things that will just help you guys think about every possible scenario that you guys are asking police guards to do. I also think one of my biggest concerns with this is the email that was sent out to the school community by Superintendent Advisor on June 3rd indicated that this has been a longstanding concern, and the reason why we're considering doing, arming our security guards is to change the police response time. I don't understand how arming our guards changes police response time, unless you're considering our guards police, which is great, except they have one handgun and potentially not as much body armor as an active shooter will have. So I would ask you, what are we asking these guards to do? Second, if we only have one of these guards on the Lime Street campus here, how is that person supposed to respond on foot faster than potentially our police department does? Our police department is actually quite quick in this area. Lime, it's a different story. Have we reached out to all of the different towns around us? I know that we don't have students maybe from East Hattam and Hattam and Salem. Those towns are all two resident trooper towns, that means they have two resident troopers. O-line only has one and a police staff. So, could we partner with them to make the response time to Lime in an emergency situation different? Are there other emergency situations, especially at Lime School, where we're concerned about time? If there's a fire, how quickly is our fire department getting there? And if they're getting there faster than our police, why is that power being changed? I think that this just represents a bigger conversation needs to happen. I don't think that we need to arm the schools. The JAMA study is one of the things that I point to. I also have found lots of research on how people who are very, very well-trained in firearm use, in the moment that they actually have to use that firearm, they can't do it the right way and the way they were trained, because it's adrenaline, emotion, everything. They're human, they're not robots. So are we dead sure that we want someone going into a classroom with children who are not a threat and making that decision? I really appreciate all of your time and listening to all of us, and please take a moment to look at that JAMA study. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have more of a question, really, than a public statement. My name is Faulkner Hunt. I have two girls in the high school and two boys that have already graduated. But my question really is, is the discussion really about doing this or not doing this? Is it doing this or doing nothing? Or what is the other option? And what are some of the, I presume this is going to be sort of part of a holistic thing that we're doing that has multiple areas that are being addressed. The discussion about, you know, mental health, and that's obviously one of the things that people always talk about as sort of the counter to this, that's a sort of a slow burn. I think that would take a while, this sort of boiling ocean about that. I mean, I've been trying to work on my own mental health my whole life, and it never got anywhere. So, I think it's, you know, I'd like to just know the comprehensive plan. I mean, if you could speak to that at some point. Thank you.
Yeah, we, Walter, is it Walter Hunt?
It's Faulkner.
Faulkner Hunt. We will respond to that later, but those are great questions. And we have answers that I think you'll find settled. That is fine.
My name is Anna Davis. I'm a current student at Lime O-line High School, and I have been enrolled at Lime O-line Public Schools since kindergarten. I would just like to say thank you to all the parents for coming out and voicing their opinion, but I feel a student's voice is also very important. I can definitely say I'm opposed to arming our security guards. I am familiar with the two security guards around campus. I feel they're a friendly presence, and I feel that the second that they're carrying around a gun, that entire mood changes. I also don't feel that adding a gun to a situation is really going to improve at all. If anything, if a kid gets caught in the crossfire, or if some sort of event happens and the gun ends up in the wrong hands, I just don't see it ending well. I don't feel that adding guns to already fight volatile situation is going to help us at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mona Colwell. I live at 2 Dutchess Drive, and I'm not going to be talking about guns. I'm here tonight because at the last Board of Ed meeting, there was on the table about the expansion of Mile Creek, and a couple of other people in town and myself sent letters asking you guys to reconsider not expanding Mile Creek and looking into what was Lorik Dean Frazer's original thought and just using and utilizing the space at Center School for the demands. And I, you know, these people are talking about slowing down these decisions about fence. I have to say, like, I thought you guys did a fabulous job at the last meeting discussing it. But I don't feel like the same discussion is going on when it comes to this expansion. And I, I don't know if tonight you guys are voting on whether or not to approve moving forward with borrowing $50 million from the state or not, but I'm totally opposed to it before we really know what is going on. I'm really wanting to see more on Center School and space. Our schools can hold up to 1,600 students. We're at like 1,300 now. I just can't see putting an addition on a school building without figuring out, can we utilize our existing space? Thank you.
Thank you, Mona. Is there any other public comment? I see none. Last chance, raise your hand. Okay, is anybody online? There's nobody online? Last call. Okay, say no more. That is the end of public comment. Thank you all for taking the time to come and speak. Next topic is approval of education specifications and resolutions.
So I know, I saw Rusty back there and Anthony Sianola. So if you have any questions, we certainly be prepared to answer them, but as we discussed last meeting, there are some requirements to submit the grant application. Again, this is in no way committing you to spending any money. This, it just allows us to submit the grant application for the renovated new project that could be considered at Mile Creek. Those are both included, and the grant, as you might remember, is due June 30th. So we would need approval through of these, both education specifications and the attached resolutions in order to submit the grant by June 30th.
And just for clarification, more so publicly, this is approval to apply for a grant that we could then turn down if we were not moving forward with such pressure?
That is correct. Ultimately, the decision as to whether or not to borrow money will be made by, through a grant.
Everyone clear on that? It's just a vote to apply for a grant, right? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution and the specifications that stated we're doing here.
Yes, right. Thank you, Jen. Any second.
All second.
Thank you.
Jason, please.
All in favor? Or is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, so, um, this grant that we're applying for is for any money to be used on, that is decided? So it's just a blind kind of thing we're doing?
No. So we will submit the plan, option 3A, which if you recall was renovate the renovated new job at Mile Creek, and the other schools would simply be the base scope. So that would be what we were applying for. And again, does not necessarily mean we get that money, first of all. It doesn't mean that we're committed to spending that money. It just, it's considered a priority project, so it has to begin by June 30th, so there is a timeline in order to submit this.
Okay. So what if there's some change of decision and we want to do something different and it doesn't involve the expansion of Mile Creek and we want to do something different?
It can make changes at any time.
So by requesting a grant of this size of an ask, we can always back that down later, but you can't grant it up later. So if we request now for whatever the cost is, whatever this grant is, and we say, four months, we say, hey, we don't want to do any of this, we're just going to do this, that grant's still an option on the table, but if you don't do it, then you don't have that on the table there.
So you can go down, you can't go up, but you can use it for something else?
Not something else. You can decrease the project goal. So if you would say, hey, I want to build X, you can always build a quarter X, and that's okay, because you asked for X.
But also, to get back to the point, because I too heard a lot, up and down the street here in Memorial Day Parade, it was very interesting talking to different people, in terms of what about that option of doing things with Center School? And I know that we, we're trying to reduce options, because we couldn't study all of them, but from the standpoint, if in continuing weeks, once we look at that again, that would be a different cycle at a later time if we're even, I mean, is that, that not just totally off the table, we're advancing with this proposal now, the grant, to find out the mistake?
That's correct. Just to, no, I did, I looked back, the presentation that we had in January, January 5th meeting, if you want to look back, maybe not to say we can't play with it, but just as a reminder, what we were presented as that option of moving to Center School, moving administrations to Hill School, was presented to us as being significantly more expensive due to renovations, both to the Hill School and to the Center School.
So from a cost standpoint, it sounds like a nice idea.
That was a good consideration. Just, if anybody in the public wants to look also at the January 5th presentation online and see if they agree with us doing that.
So what Susanna's saying, though, I understand like what Chris was saying, we can't use that for any other project, but if we decide to do something different, what happens then?
Depends if it qualifies under the renovated new status. Rusty, maybe you could speak a little more to this than I could, but as long as it's within that renovated new status, to Chris's point, you know, if it's a, let's say it's originally a 10-classroom addition, you chump down to a 2-classroom addition, but still qualifies as renovated new, you could get that money. But if it didn't qualify as renovated new, it would no longer be a priority project, and we would get significantly less free personnel.
That's correct. And it's, as long as you're staying at that model of school, if you change schools, then you have to, it can always be a compensation mistake. They're not so hard and fast on it, but more than likely, you have to reapply if you decide to do something totally different.
Well, Jason, I appreciate you pointing out January is a blur. I know that we did consider, we had problems with trying to do that. It doesn't still have to shuffle, we still have to shuffle people no matter what we do and if we take them. People are just here, they have to go somewhere.
Administration is more than just.
And then the problem with kindergarten kids are covered with school bus and other requirements that pre-plate kids are not, so that would cause another complicating factor of how we meet our kindergarten education requirements. and other requirements that preplay kids are not. So that would cause another complicating factor of how we meet our kindergarten education requirements.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of this motion? See the progress, say aye.
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 Any against, say nay? Any extensions?
I'm going to abstain.
One extension? The motion passes. Thank you. Next is the hot topic of approval of armed security guards. The recommended motion. Sorry, did you just discuss the last meeting? Oh, sorry, you.
Sure, so I think obviously we all know the topic of discussion. We did discuss this at the last meeting, that we are recommending that we add, uh, arm our current security staff. One of the things I'd like to begin by going through first is the results of the thought exchange summary. As you know, we did send that out to the community. It was a tool we hadn't used before. It is not a survey. It's, my best description is that it's similar to an online discussion group because it allows people to comment or rate other people's comments. So I will just go through some of the results. The question was, what feedback do you want to provide for education as they consider the idea of employing armed guards at each one of our three campuses? We had 419 people who participated. They provided 422 thoughts, and there were 18,380 ratings. So you can see 273 participants shared their thoughts, 299 rated their thoughts, and 285 participants explored the thoughts. Just in terms of who answered, the majority of respondents were parents. You can see 83% of respondents identified themselves as parents. 15% identified themselves as staff members, and 3% identified themselves as students. Just to be clear, this only went out to middle school and high school students. We didn't send it to younger kids for a number of reasons. Mainly they don't have email, and they're not on our distribution list. They have email, but kind of almost. So if, of those parents that responded, the breakdown is what you would expect. The majority of respondents were from the high school. Obviously, it's our largest school in the district. And then the middle school, 27%. Center School being our smallest school at only 13%. 20% from Lime School, 26% from Mile Creek, and then 13 were clearly students or, or staff members at 13%. So we asked if they were students, which school do they attend? As I said, we didn't have a huge response from the students, but 5% responded that they were from Lime Hill Line High School, 2%. So clearly only 25 students that responded. And then 316 people were not students. And then 62, I guess, chose not to respond to that question. So the program, and this was not done by me. I want to be very clear, this was not done by anybody who's employed here. This was done by a third party who evaluates each one of the responses. They put those into certain categories based on what is written in that response. I do not support this proposal. I do support this proposal. I have questions miscellaneous. Some people put some comments in that just didn't really address the question. And then people who wanted to look at the options.
So can they check both, I do or I don't have any questions, or they only need to take them on?
So this was, they, it was a person who evaluates the responses and they categorized them.
Okay.
Based on that response. So I know this is hard to read, at least it is from here, but I can tell you the green line on the left, this is solely by the number of responses. I do support this proposal is the farthest to the left. Green shaded one. I do not support this proposal is the next one. Miscellaneous is the next, I'm working left to right here. Other options is the third one, then I have questions, sorry, the fourth one. I have questions is the fifth. So based on just looking at the responses from just whether they support the proposal or not, obviously, the support was significantly higher than, than the other responses. If you look at it from the ratings, it's a little different look. These are the number of ratings, and again, I know that's hard to read, but starting left to right, I do not support this proposal. I have questions miscellaneous, other options, and I do support this proposal. And you can see those were a little more even with I do not support this proposal being the highest on the left. As you would imagine, and as you've heard tonight, and as we've heard through a number of our emails, this is just what, I can't say what you would expect, certainly what I would have expected across the country, obviously, this is, this is a hot topic. So this slide just basically shows you that there are significant differences on both sides. There are widely varying opinions. And, you know, are hard to read from maybe the back of the room. But just as an example, on one side, we have someone who said, oh, they're 100% in favor of this initiative. Safety should be a top priority to someone who said absolutely not. School is not a facility for armed guards. School should not be a place that instills fear or no guns. Someone said all for it. Someone says guns do not belong in, in schools. So much like you would expect in, in any topic where people have varying opinions, we did get a wide variety of opinions. And that's just a summary of the responses I did share with all of you earlier. All the actual responses, so hopefully you have a chance to review those. The second piece that I want to talk about is the cost. We've done an initial budget estimate of what this might cost. That is included in your packet here. So if you open that up, we did talk to our insurance, and we could get law enforcement coverage, which would cover our guards, even though they would not be law enforcement employees. That would cost us an additional $7,500 a year. The cost to purchase firearms and protective gear would cost about $8,900. That obviously would be a one-time cost. We wouldn't be purchasing, purchasing that on an annual basis. We discussed last time additional compensation for our security officers for taking on a higher level of responsibility by carrying a firearm. That would cost anywhere between $30,000 and $35,000 a year, depending on what, how much we decide that compensation might be.
Does that seem aggregate number?
Yes, yes, these are all aggregate numbers. Training would be $4,000 a year. That's annual cost. Supplies would be $1,500 a year. For a total cost on an annual basis of between $43,000 and $48,000 per year. That's obviously not including the one-time cost of the firearms and protective gear universal. I did also include the summary of comments in there. One other thing that I would like to emphasize that I think is vitally important, and I've mentioned this a few times, and I can't reiterate it enough. We have never said and will never say that this is the singular solution to this problem. This is one of many, many solutions that we have put in place. We have been looking at this for many years. We began looking at this well over 10 years ago, before Sandy Hook, when we had doors that weren't even locked in all of our schools. Added visitor access control systems. We've added radio systems. We've added essentially bulletproof glass and shadowproof glass. We've added alarms on every phone in every classroom. We've added the ability for our radios to communicate across the entire district. We've given the police departments access to our radios. We've, in this out-of-view shade over here, was developed by one of our employees, patented by one of our employees. We have interior door locks on all our doors. Our classrooms are quite secure. But again, this is a continual evolution of safety. We want to continue to make sure our students are safe. One of the things that has always been a concern of our safety committee, of our first responders, is the response time. Often, if you look at any of these incidents, they happen within minutes. No matter how close a police station is or how close a police officer is, unless they're parked in the parking lot or they're on campus, they're not going to be able to respond in time to potentially save lives. That is why we are recommending this. We believe that this will allow us to have the opportunity to stop a potential shooter before they cause significantly harm to students and staff members.
Ian, were you able to come up with information on what other districts have, have armed guards or police, and for how many years they have?
So there's a number of districts. I had mentioned last night at our policy committee meeting that there have been a couple of surveys in Connecticut. Unfortunately, survey questions put out by the superintendent's organizations could have been interpreted different ways by different people. And I'll use Old Saybrook as an example. Old Saybrook has an armed police officer in every single school. So if their superintendent was asked the question, do you have armed guards? The answer's going to be no, because they have SROs. So I think it's somewhat semantics there. But based on the survey that CAPS put out, it looks like about just under a third of school districts in Connecticut have some sort of armed security, whether it be police officers or armed guards. I know in this area, East Hampton has armed guards. As I said, Old Saybrook has SROs in every single building. Waterford has SROs, as we discussed last night. North Bramford has had armed security guards on, on their campus for the last 10 years. Region 16, which is Eakin Falls and Prospect, has had armed security guards for about the last six years. And I've spoken to all the superintendents of those districts that have armed guards. And the number one thing that they told me, because one of our concerns that we wanted to make sure that our students and our staff felt comfortable, their statement was, like many other things, people quickly forget that because they're concealed, that people even have them. So the concern of students being worried about a gun, being that someone's hit, they're not going to see it, and they, you know, down the road, it very well might not even be something that they are even aware of.
So there wouldn't be the opportunity for us to do further checking with these districts, talking to school council, council staff, right? Have there been problems? Have there been concerns? You're saying not, but if we felt like we needed to dig deeper and see?
Certainly, there's, yeah, there's, there's other districts that I'm sure will be happy to speak.
This is not new.
No, this is not new. There was a, I won't get into studies. I don't want to think we need to be arguing over studies, but. Yeah, there, since 2018, there was a study out of UConn that said that, I believe it was close to 80% of school districts in the United States have SRO in their buildings.
Okay, I beg the question, am I not?
No, that's, that's, we discussed that. We, we discussed that. That was actually on our board's agenda back in 2018. We looked at that. I don't know if any of you were on the board at that time.
It was 2019, so.
Okay. But we did look at that, and at the time, we had one security guard for three campuses during the day, and we felt we were way under staff. So we did look at hiring an SRO. Our proposal at the time was to have, we had two options. We could hire a state trooper to be an SRO, which was quite expensive. And the issue with an SRO, you have one person, the response time is still an issue. Because let's say they're at Mile Creek, and they have to respond to an incident at Lime. There, it's going to take them even, no matter how fast they're going, 10, 15 minutes to get there. But the, we also looked at hiring a old Lime police officer to be our SRO. Obviously, they wouldn't have police powers at Lime unless the first person there granted them police powers. But that wasn't well received by the state police. We're, we're not huge components of that. And again, it's the same issue. You have one person with a weapon and the potential to stop somebody who's trying to injure our students and staff, but by the time they get there, they very well could have hurt people. So ultimately, from that discussion, what we did is we hired security guards at every single campus. And that's why we have the staff that we have now.
For how many years have they been on staff for?
So that started in 2018 that we employed all those people. We have one on each campus. We have two on this campus. One works during the day, and one works during the afternoon. I know there was discussion last time when we met about adding an additional security officer here. And that would cost us, in addition to the cost of this on an annual basis, that would cost us about $38,000, $39,000 a year.
Any further discussion?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Martha.
So I have rabbled with this for the last two weeks. And as a retired teacher, one of the things that I did is I went out and started doing my research. So I researched everything from friends at the State Department of Education in this state of Connecticut to other states that I have contacts in, major cities that are considering it, where I have friends that work as town engineers, not all in the state. And I looked at this thought exchange, and I kind of went through it to say yes and no. So I, I got 215 yeses, 94 no's, 101s where they indicated we needed a little more time, and 11 that stated mental health issues needed to be looked at as well. I do think that two years ago, we did an absolutely excellent job preparing for our students to come back to school from COVID. I have a lot of questions. One of my biggest concerns as a former teacher is why the teachers weren't polled in this district. I strongly encourage the teachers in this district to get up and speak up because I think there are varying opinions. I've spoken to some of them. And I did request that they be polled because I think that they are also bodies in this building. I think we need to take more time. I'm not saying yes to it. I'm not saying no to it. I'm saying we need more time. Two weeks is not enough time to say, okay, we're going with this. We have the month of July. We have time to make a committee. We have committees for curriculum. We have committees for hiring. We need a committee to look at this. We need to spend more time. We talk about spending time on building a school. Let's take some time to protect our kids. And I think there's a lot of things to look at. I know we have other precautions in place. I know that part of our school facilities plan is to put some more things into place for protection. But I think we need more time to look at evidence and to talk to more people and to get some ideas and, and move forward. Because we can have a special meeting at any time during the summer. I know it's a little harder to find people because of doing things. But I know that each and every one of us would give it our all to be here for special meetings. And I'm more than happy to devote whatever time I have left in my free time to serve on a committee to discuss this and plan it out so that our children are safe in our schools. And I want them just as much as any parent.
I just have, sorry, Anna. I just have one question. So how many staff are in Region 18? And how many staff was this sent to? Because the results say that 61 staff responded. So I think they were polled based off of this thought exchange.
It was sent to all staff in the district.
All staff.
Parents in the district, all staff. And as I said, the middle school and high school students. And about 300 staff members.
But I believe one of your answers were they were depicting teachers.
15%.
15%.
61. So everyone got it, 61 staff responded.
Shouldn't say teachers, that could have been any staff.
Thank you.
So I have to say I agree with Martha 100%. I think the resounding comment tonight is slow down. We have the summer. This is such a nuanced exchange, and it's so polarizing that we have to have 100%, at least the majority, not just 50/50, of our community behind it. What I'm hearing, there's research that needs to be analyzed, experts that need to testify, child, child development experts that will indeed identify potential impact. I think we're moving too fast.
You have to, there's only, we need to commit, like, to get a consultant or a group of consultants.
I think we have, we have a lot of expertise within the district. Like, if the students aren't responding, and the teachers aren't responding, and only a portion of the parents have responded, I think we need a concerted effort to get those opinions and work with them.
Well, I'd be in agreement with not another survey, but whether it was something more like a town hall or something like that. But, you know, on the other hand, we have, we have sought expertise in all the decisions that have been prior to this for all safety aspects, right? So it's not like we thought of putting bulletproof glass in the people's classrooms. You know, so all of those were made with experts' opinions and advice and input. So I think that this is such a, you know, such a stepping stone step. Basically, the, uh, step stone, basically, for the next thing. It could be seen as a knee-jerk reaction, and you're overreacting, and then, you know, those kinds of things. But I think, on the other hand, it's one more piece of the puzzle to figure out how to keep the kids, at least for a few minutes, safer, if not longer term. Again, it's a concealed carry handgun. It's not that they're going to be walking around the school with this. And like Ian said a minute ago, you probably never even know it's there. There's probably, given the number of people in this room, there's probably somebody in here with a concealed carry weapon. I would, I would guess. But the, the thought that they're walking around. But the, the thought that they're walking around fully loaded, you know, looking for people is not, is not what's happening. So I'm kind of, it's a tough stage, right? So I know it's not an AR-15, and they're not, you know, going to go after a handgun with an AR-15, but on the other hand, if you don't have something there, and you're there, what are you going to do? You're going to run away. So, so does the resource officer or the security officer turn his back and run, or do they, do they have something in their personnel that are able to at least take down what they can? So we, so that's all. It's, you know, there's not one right answer, obviously, because it's such a dilemma. What if, what if he could have, and he didn't?
But we do need to look at the fact that we have the largest campus, we have one person on it.
Oh, yeah.
And I mean, I have, I know that we're including Ron in that, but Ron could be down at Mile Creek on a project, and...
That's why it's not even about the building, it's about the building.
Yeah. What are we going to do about?
Yeah, I, I think what Jen said, and what Ian mentioned before, that this proposal is, is one building block of the entire wall that we're trying to build. You know, I think we, we heard a lot from the community about mental health. You know, we're, we're working on that with our school, you know, having our resource or having our security guards armed, I think that's an important piece of this. Do we have it up right now? Maybe not for this, but that's part of the assessment, maybe that's the next step to add to the mission. But, you know, they're all small pieces that come together that, that make that, you know, force field around our schools. But the mental health piece, and the support that we can give our security officers, we would never think about giving a teacher a book but not giving them the, the lessons and the trainings on how to teach that, that mystery. So why would we give our security guards a polo shirt and think they're going to be able to protect us? So I, I think it's an important piece of the tool.
I would like to say that I don't think that this is a knee-jerk reaction, certainly for myself. When I ran the Board of Education in 2019, I fully expected that this would be one of the considerations we'd have to deal with. I sure didn't think COVID was coming, you know? So from that standpoint, I, I've always worried about this. And I remember my second grader sitting there after Sandy Hook happened, and the policeman, and he sat down, and we were eating something, and sure enough, you know, the gun popped out, sat right there. Kids all knew he was a believer, okay? They knew what his job was. So this notion that we can't have a gun in a school setting, if you have something that the appropriate authority could figure, we're trying to teach that in life anyway. So from that standpoint, I feel it's much like cancer, and I'm like, ah, I'm gonna, now I need an MRI. You know, it's like, we put all these steps in place, we put the COVID on the windows, we hardened the buildings, we've done all that. We've always felt like the next time something like this happens, maybe this is something we have to do. Is it the prudent thing to look at? And I appreciate, I appreciate all the questions that people are raising. So many of them have already been noodled through by Ian's staff, looking at what we have to do, what we need, how do we compare other districts and what they already have in place. They've already identified many of the same questions that you're asking, and I'm glad you're asking them, because we need to make this comprehensive. But we got a reprieve from having to deal with this sad, ugly situation, in part, thanks to COVID, because we all stayed home, we couldn't go anywhere for one year. But it is, we got him back into school, and sadly, we see tragedies around us, and it's the next thing we have to address again.
I think that indeed, everything we say is accurate and on target. Our, the question we have is the process, and are we doing our due diligence? By looking at research, parent comments, community feedback, it seems to be moving rather rapidly. And it's not saying, no, let's not do it, it's saying, let's have more deliberation.
So I've definitely been, this whole time while we've been discussing it, you know, ever since, you know, Ian mentioned it, it's something that would be added to the, to the agenda a couple of weeks ago. And definitely not something I take lightly. I don't like drawing more of those into a situation where our children are present. I certainly have concerns, but I do feel I've had a lot of questions that have an answer, that I do want to make sure that, you know, that the other parents deserve reassurance too, that, that these are questions that we've been looking at. I mean, we did have a good, different policy committee meeting yesterday, a good opportunity to discuss what the, not policy, but the regulations around who are hiring, and what we're going to do to ensure that standards are being met. And they did have a lot, you know, that was a good conversation. So I think whatever we decide tonight, the communication doesn't stop, so making sure that the parents are aware of how it's going to be handled, and it's going to be handled responsibly. I, I do think it's a limited action, it's a concealed weapon, it's one guard, it is, I know, tool's been used a lot, which is, is funny, because when I did have a chance to talk to some of the guards that we have currently, and ask them if they felt comfortable, because obviously, it's putting them in a situation, and they did indicate they felt comfortable, and that it would be just another tool that they use or have available to them if needed. Hopefully, just as with some of the medical equipment they have available to them, ready to grab, hopefully, they don't need it, but, but it's just a tool for them to use. I don't think that, I certainly sympathize with the concerns of, of parents feeling that their children are going to be frightened or intimidated by a firearm. I'm not sure that it is, unfortunately, so commonplace in our society to see an armed guard wherever we go. I don't know that one armed guard with a concealed weapon is going to cause that much harm, but as Suzanne said, I think talking with other districts and seeing if, if their counselors have heard from students that have those concerns is, is something we should also continue to bring to every decision we make tonight. So, you know, I think my, my question would be, if we postponed it tonight, perhaps they heard a lot, and not everybody's always going to agree with whichever way we go, what, I would want to know what more definitively you'd be looking for to make that decision in, in most of the times tonight.
I would like to say that, oh, wait, you weren't answering, sorry, you're not answering that.
Oh, no, I think he was asking.
Okay. So...
So was you, yeah.
I don't know if I'm going to answer that. Well, I do have something. I think that, I think what I hear from you and what I'm thinking of, which is not exactly what you're thinking of, I think that if, if we were to, to go on getting more information, like, what does that look like? You know, what, what is the point of going on, and what are we going to get from that? And what is the, what is the guidelines or structure of what we're doing? You know, I think we need to have some really great plan, if that's what we're going to do, where we actually efficiently figure out what we're looking at, what that looks like. But myself personally, I am for arming our security people on our campuses, I am for that. I just, I, I think that this has been going on for a long time, I don't think it's a quick knee-jerk reaction, me personally, because I think it's been something that I've been talking about and thinking about, witnessing and absorbing since Sandy Hook. And there's been many other things since then. I just, my kids aren't in school anymore, but I just can't, I, I just feel like we need to have something in place, and I, I feel like our security guards need a weapon, maybe they're not going to in the future, and maybe we'll change that. If this, you know, if this happens, and I understand the whole mental health issue, I work in social services, I, I understand the mental health issue, but I just want to tell you, like the other gentleman had said, the mental health thing is going to take a long, long time to figure that out. It's not something that's, and I know we're all working on it, and I know we're putting things in place, but we don't have enough safety nets for people, and we just don't have it figured out. And it's going to be a long, long, hard plan to figure out. And the whole gun control thing, that's another thing, that's a long, long thing to figure out. And I just feel, up until we get these things figured out, and we see some things happening in place, I want to know that the children and the people in the school buildings are protected. And I feel that way, to do it is to have our trained personnel who are all, you know, or state cops, police cops. You know, I was brought up in a family with officers, I feel very comfortable with, with someone who has a weapon, that's trained, and that's what they do for a job, and that's what, you know, that's what they, that's, that's, just like a teacher's, that's their job. So like, I have respect for that, and I believe that we have, our security people here have really great relationships with the students in schools, and that's really important. I mean, I think that's just as important as them having a, being armed, is the relationship that they have with the students in the building. And they already have that, and that's what's key. So there's a lot of other things swimming around in my head, but that's, that's my feelings.
Just to, just to add to that, we're like, it's not that this is going to protect the children necessarily, it's just one more tool.
Yes.
To help alleviate the pain.
Right.
Or perhaps for, you know...
Well, it's all, it's all, it's all casualties, it's, it's time, and it's...
It's for graduation, and there was one security officer and an armed one standing right on the side, and so anything good about them, really. So it's not like it's going to be the be-all, end-all, to have three or four people concealed carrying on campus. But it's another step in that direction. I mean, you can't set up a perimeter around every school, because they heat everybody up, it's not going to happen.
Everything, we, we have to weigh everything. It's, as you said, it's, we can't, we're not going to imprison our children, and we can't keep them safe from everything. Because I hope we have to weigh what, what can we do that might be an additional tool, and is that cost more harm than good.
But also, let's remember that perpetrators tend to be suicidal, they're attracted to bullshits. It's just something for us to remember.
Look, you're just giving them more response time to kill more people before the, the person you can get to kill them. So why not kill a superhero? There are other studies that are, I know everyone's having the JAMA study, I'd love to see what, there are other studies of response times and situations where people don't go to one place, or they start there, and they turn, and they go somewhere else. I don't think we're talking about visibly drawing attention to the fact that we aren't the security guards. So we're, we're not making it more visible, we're providing...
It's not that it's visible, it's the fact that people don't...
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I, I think the concealed carry piece is just one part of the overall plan. So, you know, Ron, Ian, and the team will put together a comprehensive plan on how to manage this, now that they are trained and, and armed appropriately. So it's not just, hey, we're going to give the, the security guards a handgun, it's we're going to give them the training, we're going to put plans in place, we're going to have, you know, appropriate measures in place that, that may be talked about in executive session, because you don't want to give them, give any of these people that may be coming to the school to do harm, any advantage. So, you know, some of that is going to be Ron's job to determine that plan, and, and maybe we have a board discussion on it, but I think it's important to give him the time before the fall to, to start working on that plan, or continue to work on that plan and put that in place. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to employ armed...
I actually have one last thing to add. Do you have something to say?
Yeah, I'll do it. So I've had the opportunity to sit on the Safety Committee for many years, and this is part of a comprehensive plan. This is not something that was a knee-jerk reaction within the last several weeks based on the happenings with the investigation. And I support this, this initiative. When I think about our school system, I think about it as an extension of what happens in our homes where our children are. You have an educational piece, you have a safety piece, and you have a piece where you're trying to make your children good citizens of their community, their state, their nation, their world. So if, if those three components, those pillars, if there are cracks, whether it be at home or in our educational system, we need to fix that, we need to address it. In our school system, every year, we hear at our Board of Education meetings from, from Michelle Dean, from our Director of Curriculum, a plan for continuous improvement to make our students better in the classroom. On the Safety Committee, we are constantly, with a diverse group of individuals, looking about what we can do better within this school system. And Ian already outlined what we've done, the, the shadowproof glass, the shades on the windows. So, and then lastly, making our, our students good community members. This is, this is an appropriate step of continuous improvement for the security measures for Region 18. It's the right thing to do, and it's the right time to do it.
Thank you. Okay, I was holding my, my statement for last, because I don't want to overlap too badly with what anybody else has said, and I want to make sure nothing gets unsaid. The, the point that was well made is that the first step that anybody would do in an active shooter situation is to call somebody with a gun, right? Our police, the state troopers are not close, they can take up to 20 minutes easily to get here, having an armed guard here saves that step. It's the first thing anybody would do. These security officers are authorized only to fire in the event of an active shooter situation, which unfortunately, is somebody's already shooting a gun. It's not somebody walking around looking suspicious, or maybe carrying a weapon, it's an active shooter. So they're not security officers outside of that, they're not SROs, they're not here to arrest students or to police students, they're here only to respond to an active shooter. The, the thing I keep thinking about, and hopefully people know what I'm talking about, is a sheepdog called a Marima sheepdog, which is a white dog that looks like a sheep. It's fluffy, it's friendly, it is, as a puppy, it's put with a herd, it stays with them, it lives with them, it doesn't go into the house, it lives in the field with these sheep. These sheep think it's, it's a sheep. The difference is that when there's a predator, this dog will kill it. And these security officers are like these sheepdogs. They have, they're concealed carry, they're not showing their weapons, they are part of the community, everybody knows who they are, they are invisible. The children know they're armed, but they forget it very quickly, because they're not walking around like police officers. And the security that these sheepdogs give is transparent and invisible, but present. It's in addition to all the other security measures that we have in place to prevent people from getting to the building who aren't authorized, which sometimes fail. And the event that they do fail, we have somebody here who can protect these children forcefully, as opposed to passively, by calling somebody, waiting for somebody to arrive. I have one big question. Well, the, the initial thing is that 80% of Connecticut schools already have some sort of SRO, we're not breaking ground here. People, this JAMA study with three, three times the deaths with an armed officer on site, but there's only 23% of those, of these cases that they studied that, that had an armed officer. So those numbers can be heavily skewed, it's a small percentage that include this fact, and they're taking the numbers from that, which, I don't want to, I don't want to suspect what it could be, but there could be reasons for it that include the, the original shooter. We can't really publish a complete list of our safety measures, because we don't want to, you know, share all of our secrets, but I encourage the Communications Committee to let people know, I mean, the obvious things like window shades, and, and shadowproof glass, and locked doors, and vestibles and so forth, that are obvious to any casual observer, to let everybody know that this is one small piece of a big, big, big solution to try to keep our children safe. And this last piece is just based on a conversation I had, you know, I spoke to somebody who studied all the different studies on this, and was talking about what went wrong and what went right, and so on and so forth. And her point was that everybody's hands are tied, right? We can't rely upon the school boards, or the superintendents, or the principals to watch out and handle all these children who sometimes give us all kinds of signals that there's something wrong, personally, at home, socially, whatever. And, you know, you can't do things without the parents' authority, you can't do things without, you know, HIPAA being involved. We're still a community, and we see somebody who looks suspicious, I think we should speak to each other about... There's still a community and we see somebody who looks suspicious. I think we should speak to each other about it in a reasonable and responsible way because oftentimes we look to somebody else to govern our children and really we need to do it ourselves. And I thought that was a nice little point, that the war we all talk to each other, the safer our children are. It's not always up to somebody else to do this and oftentimes those public people don't have the authority to to do it. So I think we all need to watch each other's backs. That's my final vote. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none. Chris, would you like to make a motion?
Love to. I'd like to make the motion to authorize the superintendent to employ armed security officers on all campuses and develop policies and regulations pursuant to such authorization.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next is the approval of the middle school field trip.
Hi, good evening, everyone. And we are here because we are looking forward to approval to run an eighth grade trip next year. It could be offered to any kid in eighth grade with about 20 students. The trip will be over April vacation and it would be headed out west. We would go to Grand Canyon, Bryce National Park, and to Zion National Park as well. The trip would be for five days over April vacation with an approximate departure date of April 8 and return date of approximately April 13. The projected cost is $3,135 per student. That is a super nuts cost that includes everything from the airfare to the ground transportation. Once we land out west, it does not include transportation to Bradley Air Sports Center. Everything else is included. Lodging, food, Grand Classroom, which is the organization that's actually running the trip, has guys and personnel with us 100% of of the time and it also includes all activities and other things. In addition, that fee includes trip insurance and that's comprehensive trip insurance and it includes refunds if as long as the trip is canceled within 24 hours of of the trip. I've included a brief itinerary. Day one, we would land in Zion. We would go to Sly Rock as well as Sedona. Day two is the Grand Canyon. Day three is Ant Hill Canyon along with Fort Shuvan as well as a boat trip on the Colorado River. Day four is Bryce National Park and Coral Dunes. And finally, day five is Zion and then moving back home on on that day. There's a couple of reasons for doing this trip. Number one, it's a fantastic cultural opportunity to be able to offer to our eighth grade. I mean, if you've been out west, it's just it's a fantastic area. And you know, we believe that relationships and community is really built best through shared experiences. What more stronger shared experience than than a than a trip out west? Also importantly, there are important curricular connections. Our seventh grade and our eighth grade science curricula, they focus heavily on neuroscience. They cover topics including geological time, land and rock formations along the fossils. All of these topics would be encountered on on a trip out west. As I mentioned, the trip is organized and run entirely by Grand Classroom. We would not have any dealings with financing or any of the day to day planning for the trip. That's all run by Grand Classroom. This is a vendor that we have not used before and so we did do a pretty extensive reference check. And if you have any questions about that, Shannon can speak to references. But the short of it is that the the organization really got glowing references during our reference check. So that's that's our proposal. Any questions?
Well, I wish everybody was still here. That was our moment. I fixed my outfit. This is a great trip. This is a great opportunity. Some field office questions about this. So up to 20 kids could go. We have what, about 90 kids in the eighth grade upcoming?
Mostly, yeah.
About, okay.
We've projected it for 20 kids. If a lot more kids show interest, we could take more kids. But it's really financially feasible if we get at least 20 kids.
How often does this school, this district, pre-COVID, I mean, screen offer field trips, something like this for what age range? And then you have the house and you have the head nods. So we've got 20 kids whose families are going toward December on a spring break trip for $3,000. And we're just talking about this whole thing about trying to make sure that we have an inclusive community where some people don't feel like outcasts or people who can't afford to get to do things and there's this group of rich kids that can go do this. How does this all balance out?
So if you recall, Suzanne, from when Jim presented, I think it was last month, the trip to Ireland, the band and the other trip. But the other trip we're not opposed. The part of the reason why I asked Noah and Jen to come now so they can fundraise the efforts so there will be opportunities for students to raise funds. We also have a limited limited amount of funds for families who are in need that may need some additional support to be able to help them do that.
This isn't tied to music, performance or something. This is just tied to if you're interested in it or part of a certain club.
This is just if you're interested, right? Correct.
Right.
So pretty much any student could go. Not that we would prohibit a student to go on any of those other trips.
Right, right.
But they're more specific.
Your performance, your your, yeah. So I've just been kind of curious about that.
So if I can address a minor groups, so I have for years backed with Science Olympia because I those relationships were deep and those opportunities to get to know students outside of the classrooms, those, in my opinion, are some of your greatest opportunities to make meaningful connections in a lot of wonderful ways. So when I was first researching these ideas, it was to be a Science Olympia trip. And that's where I started. That's where I got the idea. I was I was actually I'm on the Board of Directors for Science Olympia and I was at a meeting there and there was a convention of of people out there and I just saw some great things. COVID, everything sort of changed that. And then I approached Noah and said, you know, I really I really would love like open this up, you know, what am I envision making? This may be a bigger opportunity for those for our community as opposed to having it. You're in the band. You're on the Science Olympia. You happen to be in eighth grade. I think the opportunity to go outside and connect with the world and nature and to be really small in awe of what is around you. I passionately believe in it's really important for for all of us in a lot of different ways. So it is our hope as well to make it possible for more and to make it possible for more.
I would just caution to somehow craft these programs like that so it doesn't become thus those who can, those who can't.
Oh, right.
Because then we're just back to not an inclusive community, even though most of the person is still the same, skin color. And it's so scary.
So Ian, you were saying that there is some monies for families who financially might not be able to
Yes, so when LOLIP, if you recall, I think I mentioned this last meeting, LOLIP is no longer in existence, but they did have some money in their accounts and they transferred that to us. We've also worked in the past with OISB if there were funds that were necessary. And we do have, we often get donations to the school and the communities to help support families. But they would have to demonstrate need obviously to to be able to do that, not just dedicate themselves to the trip.
Right.
They have to show demonstrate need, which we do through our pre-introduced lunch program.
One question, if you know the answer, the I guess I have a picture of the Colorado River and taking a raft is white water rafting, but it says float. Does that distinguish it as a quiet part of the river?
Yes.
And I've been on it. It's quiet from that section. We're going.
Not that it wouldn't be fun, but but
I did, I was reading your information and it sounds like a phenomenal group that does these and it sounds like a wonderful experience. And it's nice to hear the middle school doing something like this. It seems like these kind of things happen more when the kids are older. I do know one of my sons went on one of those People to People, so he was actually younger, still in middle school. But there isn't like a lot of that stuff, which I think would be great because I think it's it'd be great for the kids to experience something like this too and and build on their being with other people and away from their parents and family and meeting other people and getting more independent and feeling more secure and
Which is also valuable in middle school and to be able to just show another experience and let them I I think it belongs in the middle school a lot, especially this kind of trip to Venice with you.
And with with you bringing up about financially, so like is it, I mean, I don't know, like is it something that we can put out there to other parents, just like if you want to do a donation for someone who may want to on this trip but might not have enough, you know, is are you willing to, you know, put some money towards this great kind of you know, I don't know what we can or cannot do, but I know sometimes people love to help out, you know, and
I think I'm thinking exactly that that enemy did for, sorry. There's a there's some story that I saw somewhere about that where there was one little kid at lunchtime didn't have lunch and he heard it quiet. And the other children found out. They all took a piece of their lunch to add to his so that they were surprised to find out that he too had lunch like the other kids, which speaks to what Suzanne was saying, that you don't want anybody to feel excluded. I love that idea. I encourage you, Ian, to promote that because I think people love to do that.
Yeah.
Right, and do it anonymously, anonymously, right?
Right, right, right.
Wonderful idea. Everybody can do what they can, what they feel like giving to make sure everybody has a chance to go on these trips or these parties.
And we are, we are looking at those. Like we we have, we're we're trying, right? We have ideas, right? So I grew up as the kid who was on free and reduced lunch. I I want these opportunities for everybody. I love that that we have to be in a district that we many of us don't go hungry, but I I respect the fact that we want everybody who would like to be on the trip to go on the trip and we will do our due diligence to make everything possible. And I'm hopeful that I just know Science Olympia, the community has always come through. And Limaline is a fantastic community and I feel like if if it's something that that to move forward with, I feel like we need to get the support of the community.
How many, do you have just been any other teachers other than the two?
Two, two to start with. It depends on the student. If we get more than 20, we'll have additional.
Okay. That is a good idea. What's the difference in science and trip? More view of it.
What's the typical ratio at this age group for field trips like that?
For this one, the company suggests 10 to 1 is a great ratio.
I make a motion to approve the Limaline Middle School trip. Pass, present.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any against, say nay. Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Okay, next is policy to review and the policy to review and possible action, the use of school facilities, buildings and grounds armed security officers.
So there's two different policies that our committee looked at last night. The first is the policy 1330, which is use of school facilities, buildings and grounds. You might recall, we've had this, this has been in front of the board a number of times. There was a request from the Limaline Soccer Club that we open up our facilities, specifically the turf field during the summer. Previously, our policy had said that all of our facilities were closed during summer. So we wanted to, obviously, one of our goals with adding the turf field in was to allow more use throughout the year. And one of the reasons why our fields had been closed during the summer for outside use was to prevent them from getting ruined. Obviously, with turf field, that's not gonna happen. So that was the first that's the first policy. So there's a very minor change in that policy that allows for people to rent the turf field during the summer. The second change really, which is the application form, which doesn't necessarily require a vote because that is a regulation, but certainly we can vote on that. Simply adds in the caveat that anyone who rents the field during the summer, if they rent it after 3 o'clock, no matter who they are, would have to pay custodial overtime fees. That's already in place during the school year when someone rents our facilities after 9 o'clock, again, no matter who they are. Except for a school-based organization, they would have to pay custodial overtime fees. So those are really two minor changes. We did, the Limaline Soccer Club did come into the meeting and I think they were appreciative of us considering this change. So this would allow them to rent the facility over the over the summer. Questions on that? I know that was kind of a
Is there a certain time that they close during the summer or is it just
Yes, we, when you say we
The field.
Uh, no, I mean, no, obviously when you run out of lights. But you know, if someone wants to pay that custodian there until 9 o'clock at night, then they can they can do that. They're currently requesting 6 to 8. So all of our custodians, we have two shifts during the summer, a 6 to 2 shift in the 8 to 4. So that would be overtime.
So somebody would need to be there an hour, like about an hour after?
Uh, maybe not an hour after, but
There's not a set amount.
Right, you know, it might be a half hour to clean trash up, you know, lock the gates up, things like that. Empty trash cans. We want people, the question had come up, why do we need custodial coverage when we when people are renting our facilities? I think pretty much every school district has that to protect their assets. And we put a lot of money into that field and we want to make sure that it's well taken care of. Someone had asked about the comparison to the tennis courts. Well, we do charge, if a group wanted to use the tennis courts, we would charge them as well. That doesn't say that you can't walk down to the tennis courts and play tennis, but they're a friend. That's very different. We don't charge for that. But if someone wants to run a tennis tournament or hold a tournament, they would be charged and they would have to pay the custodial fee.
And we also thought at the end of the evening, they when they pick up the trash and lock things up, there'd be a bit of a checking to make sure that nothing was damaged, you know, so you have documentation at the end of the event. Do they scuff up the field or tear something or not, you know, so we know and they know. So that's an important closeout.
Yeah, because that was another thing that was different was the tennis courts are definitely different than the turf field. It's very hard to damage the tennis courts versus the turf field.
It's our newest asset.
So I'm moved to with the first rated of policy 1330.
Are you putting the application form
Actually, on the application form, which policy 1330. Any second.
I second.
Thank you, Anna.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, if you're favored, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against, say nay. Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. Next is policy 5142 dot 401 armed security officers.
So as somebody had mentioned earlier, Ron and I have been doing a significant amount of work to figure out what we need to do to put this in place. One of those things would be to adopt a policy. The policy that's presented to you tonight is a almost word for word, there's actually one word that's changed from Shipman and Goodwin's recommended policy, which we found in a review of policies across the state of Connecticut. Pretty much everybody uses this policy. I shouldn't say pretty much. Every single one of the examples that Cave sent to us was word for word this policy with slight adjustments, obviously, for differences in the local community. The only change that we made to their policy was at the beginning of the second paragraph where it says at the discretion of the board, the armed security officers shall be authorized to carry, we added the word concealed firearms. It just said carry firearms previously, but we added the word concealed. Other than that, it's word for word from from the Shipman and Goodwin standard policy for this. One of the requirements, by the way, as we talked about all the things, is would be to have a policy that's recommended by one of the requirements of having armed security guards would be to have a policy.
Oh, true.
So that's why we bring this.
Ian, will we be, I'm sorry, will we be reviewing the regulations at another date?
So there are, only one district had lengthy, what was it, four or five page set of regulations, which Ron and I have been working on revising to meet our needs. which Ron and I have been working on revising to meet our needs. So we talked about that a little bit at the Policy Committee, regulations, as a board, you don't need to approve regulations, that's something you directly need to do, but I will because obviously this is a big issue. Once that's complete, I will send it to you for your review and any input that you may
Yeah, that was the gist of what I was going to say.
Sorry to raise that.
No, no. We have been the same thought. I just wanted to be the dead horse, but point out this is a policy that's separate from administrative regulations that dictate who we are hiring and how they would be.
Right, and that covered a lot of the questions that people had tonight about psychological evaluations, physical evaluations, training qualifications, all that sort of stuff will be covered in the regulations.
Drug testing.
Drug testing, yep.
And I would say that will be communications challenge and opportunity that we let the community know and understand all of that without divulging inappropriate information or security-based information.
The regulations are public, right?
Correct, those will be in our policy book along with this.
Yeah, and one of the things in those regulations is saying that these security guards that are, used to be state police or, you know, police, that they left in good standing also from their job of however many, 10, whatever years they were there. So that's another thing that's stated.
Yep, that's the state statute. 10-244A requires that you must have served as a police officer or a law enforcement officer at the federal level for at least 10 years and left in good standing or retired in good standing. It says retired or left.
So will that be a requirement for employment, that you'll have to be retired, state trooper or?
Yes, if you.
Police officer?
Yes.
Ian, can you comment about our neighboring district, like Old Saybrook and then Clinton, where they have SRO or armed guards? In their policy, do they have the word concealed? And what was the feeling of the committee last night in terms of why that word is necessary?
So I did not review SRO policies, which would be the case in the towns you mentioned. They don't have armed guards, they have school resource officers. We actually have a policy on SROs in our handbook, because at one point we did have an SRO, but we don't anymore. He actually works for us. Gary Ingles at one point was our SRO many years ago. So I don't believe, though, in reviewing that policy. I did review ours and review other districts' SRO policies, but I don't recall saying anything about concealed. The reason we decided to add concealed was because we felt that was an important piece for the public to be aware of, that we felt strongly because of many of those concerns that were raised tonight about the weapons being visible, that we wanted to make sure that our policy dictated that they be concealed.
And was there discussion with our present security guards about that? Are they okay with that?
Oh, yeah. I can say with confidence, and I think Ron could verify this, I've spoken to all of our security guards. I don't want to speak for any other groups in our organization, but I've spoken with, because I have so now 300 employees about this issue individually, but every single one of our security guards is on board with this, fully on board, not a single question
Anyone else? Any further discussion? I make a motion to approve policy 5142.41, armed security officers as ready. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Mary. Any? Any further? I just want to be polite to everybody. It's a little bit of a tie there. Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? Hearing none, if you are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against, say nay. Any abstentions? Two abstentions, thank you. The motion passes. Next is executive session. I propose we take a break until 8:30. Do we have any break?